This conference will now be recorded.
Hold on this to shut it?
I don't know if it'll let you shut it, but I don't, I mean, if you could, if it don't pull down. Yeah, unfortunately, none of those. I wish that you're not right in the heat.
Yeah. I'm a little bit out of it. Otherwise, I don't lean forward. I get blinded.
You really don't care?
You know? Yeah.
Last.
What?
That's yours, right?
You can't.
Why do I?
That's yours, right? That's the door. It's true.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to do. Absolutely. So at the end, it's still, yeah.
It's still.
It's good and video. Hold on. Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Are you telling me?
Yeah.
You have any more chairs?
Yes, we do.
We got one chair.
No, I think we got a thing.
Yeah. We.
Yeah.
Well, I love.
That's always.
Just here, just a little bit.
If anybody would like to receive a copy of the decision, please sign in.
Does this all like air?
It is warming. I think I can. Yeah. See if I can get the thermostat. Yeah. See if the thermostat is on the board.
How I wonder, yeah. Where the? It's usually like. Three, three. Those deer back?
Yes. So. So hopefully it'll kick on. I reset it.
Fingers crossed.
It does say eighty, so it's.
It's five thirty. Want to start the recording? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I go ahead and call to order this hearing of June twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four in the matter of case file twenty twenty three dash oh four oh dash S U B slash C P A slash C A R slash slash T R E Vineyard Vista subdivision. My name is Joe Turner. I'm the city's hearings examiner. I'll start with a brief, I will start with some brief announcements and a summary of the process that will follow, so everyone understands how you can participate in the hearing today. I start by saying I am not a city employee. I am licensed as an attorney and trained as a planner. I serve under contract to the city council. I say that so you know you're getting a somewhat independent review of the application before me tonight. I roll as the hearings examiner is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about certain land use matters in the city of La Center. In making those decisions, I'm required to apply the city's existing laws. I'm not a policymaker. I don't have the authority to vary from or change the laws. If you think that the laws need to be changed, you can work with city council and planning commission to do that. But state law requires that this application be judged based on the laws in effect when the application was filed. As a hearings examiner, I'm to provide an unbiased decision maker. I believe I am unbiased with regard to the application before me tonight. I have not had any pre-hearing contact with any of the parties regarding the substance of the application. And I don't have any interest in the subject property or any of the surrounding properties. But anyone has the right to challenge my impartiality, to argue that I'm biased in one way or another, and you can do that when it's your opportunity to testify. Pause for a minute. We've got some people standing in the back. Can we bring these chairs out to them? Or do we have more chairs? Okay, okay. Didn't make you stand up the whole time. Um, I lost my train of thought. Procedure will follow. I will start by asking staff to summarize their staff report copies for which available are available on the city's website. And the applicant will have an opportunity to present their proposal and respond to the staff report. Then anybody else who wants to testify in support of the application may do so. Then anybody who wants to testify in opposition or with questions or concerns. That should cover everybody who wants to say something about this application. You fall into one of those categories. Once everyone's had an initial opportunity to testify, I'll give staff and the applicant alone the opportunity to respond to the testimony that was offered. If those responses include any new evidence, I will give everyone a chance to respond to the new evidence. Otherwise, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and announce what I'm gonna do. It is important that all parties make their best case to me. My decisions are final for purposes, excuse me, wrong jurisdictions. Uh, my decisions are subject to appeal to city council, but the council generally will not allow new, new testimony and evidence on appeal. They'll decide any appeal. They may decide an appeal based on the record before me without taking additional evidence. In order to preserve your right to appeal, you or someone expressly representing you should testify orally or in writing before the close of the record. And in order to raise an issue on appeal, someone must have raised that issue before me with enough specificity that people can understand what it is. If you feel you need more time to prepare, you can ask me to hold the record open or continue the hearing. If I hold the record open, you'll have an opportunity to submit additional written testimony and evidence before I make a decision. If I continue the hearing, we can come back and do this again at a later date. Given that there was an issue with the, um, the Zoom or whatever meeting platform we're using, there was an issue with the. The link. Thank you. Drawing a blank on that term with the link. There was a typo in the link that was provided in the notice, so I am going to hold the record open for an additional weekend for, um, public comment after this hearing. Just in case anybody's trying to get online and are unable to do so. If anybody is online and unable to connect to whatever the correct website link is on the city's Facebook page. And you, they can also dot call in with their telephone. Um. But I will hold the record open. If anybody wants me to hold the record open for a longer period or continue the hearing, you must make that request before the hearing tonight and provide some support for why you, uh, the additional time is necessary. Uh, and couldn't be, whatever you want to present can't be presented at the hearing tonight or during the open record period. Uh, when you testify, please come on a podium there. We need to make sure you're on a microphone. Our hearings are recorded. That's part of our record. And in the event of an appeal, please begin your testimony by stating your name and your full mailing address. Please spell your last name so we get it right. And if you represent someone else, please say so. There is no arbitrary limit to the length of time you can testify. The testimony should be relevant to the applicable approval criteria, which are set out in the staff report. Also, please don't repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. Repeating your testimony doesn't make your case any stronger. This isn't a popularity contest. Whether everybody loves it or everybody hates it is not an issue I get to consider. The only issue before me is whether the application does or does not comply with the approval criteria. Um. Finally, if you have any exhibits you want me to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs of their documents or physical evidence, you can hand it to me. I'll market it as an exhibit and staff will make it part of the record, but I will consider it as part of my deliberations. For, is there anybody online? Well, just in assuming there is, for anybody who's online, if you wish to test, I'm gonna take testimony from those in the audience tonight first, then I'll go to anybody who's online. If you're online and want to testify, you can indicate that by clicking the raise your hand button. A little hand icon will appear next to your name. Uh, staff will call testimony from the list of raised hands. When it, for those online, when you testify, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address. Go ahead and give us your testimony when you're done. Please unmute your, remute yourself, I guess, and, uh, click on the raise hand button again so we know you've had the opportunity to testify. That concludes my introduction. Staff, I'm starting us out.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hearing Examiner. Um, can everyone hear me okay before I get further? Okay, awesome. First, I'm Alec Egrolla. I'm a planner with W S P U S A and I'm a consulting planner for the city of La Center. Um, I'll be presenting tonight and, um, as well with Mr. Tony Cooper, the city engineer, who will also be presenting for staff tonight. So as Mr. The Mr. Hearing Examiner, um, put forth, uh, this applications for the Vineyard Vista subdivision, which is file number twenty twenty three dash zero forty dash subdivision, C P A, critical areas permit and tree cutting permit. Next slide, please. Um, so here's the project site for Vineyard Vista. For perspective within the city, this is in the northern limits of La Center off of northeast North Fork Avenue and just north of Southview Heights subdivision. This is tax lot two five eight nine zero three dash zero zero zero, and it's just thirty, under thirty acres, the site. Uh, the current zoning is a low density residential with a comp plan designation of urban residential. And the proposed use of this site is an eighty-four lot, a single family detached subdivision. Next slide, please. Um, so here on the figure on the right is just a wider perspective of the city. So the city of La Center limits is generally in that beige color. Um, and you can see the sites in that very northern part of the city. Um, and then, um, this slide is giving perspective of the timeline of this application. So they came before a pre-application conference in, uh, December twenty twenty two. They submitted their subdivision application, um, in early February of this year. And then, uh, this application was deemed complete in April twenty twenty four. Therefore, the city issued a notice of application and C P A mitigation determination mitigated determination of nonsignificance on May first. Um, and then the city received seven comments during this, uh, public comment period. And then the city went ahead and issued a final C P A M D N S and public hearing notice on June tenth. And then today we are holding the hearing. Next slide, please. Um, just briefly giving context of the site with existing conditions, this existing conditions slide just indicates the various slopes on the slide, the site with, uh, some steep slopes along the south southeastern, eastern sides of the site. Um, and then the trees, as you see there. Next slide, please. And then, uh, this is the preliminary plot. Um, on the next slide, um, gives further detail of this preliminary plot. Go to the next slide, please. Again, the site has eighty-four lots. Um, with these lots, these are between sixty-nine hundred square feet and just under twelve, twenty thousand square feet. Um, four lots are below the standard minimum lot area, which is seventy-five hundred square feet. However, this is allowable through a critical areas density transfer, and I'll discuss those critical areas further. Um, also, two lots exceed the standard maximum lot area, which is about eleven thousand square feet. However, these are allowed because these lots abut the city's urban growth area. Um, and so those two lots are permitted. And then there are five lots on the site that are flag lots. Um, and then there's four different tracks on the site. Um, so track A is a stormwater facility, track B is an open space area with riparian buffer and a pedestrian trail. Um, track C is the proposed family park and track D is an additional open space area with a pedestrian trail. Next slide, please. Um, these are the key issues we'll be discussing tonight on the planning side, um, which are the proposed parking amenities and open space areas. Um, the various critical areas on the site and tree removal and preservation. Next slide, please. So here's the park and open space slide. Um, this image on the right is the proposed family park and track C. It's point eight one acres. Um, per city code, uh, a new residential development in a low density residential zone is to provide a quarter acre of park space for every forty units after the first forty units. Um, so since they are proposing eighty-four lots, they're required to provide point two eight acres of park space. However, um, they're providing point eight one acres, therefore they well more than exceed the minimum requirement. Um, what they're proposing as of now with their submittal are two pickleball courts, two picnic tables, bike racks, pathway, some preserved Oregon white oaks and, uh, oak planting areas. Um, however, per the code, they do need to provide, as we conditioned in the staff report, more bike spaces, picnic tables and trash cans. Since, um, they are providing a higher ratio of park space and they have to meet, um, increased ratio of park amenities to match that park space area. Um, and due to the unique situation of the oak preservation that they're providing with this park, there is some flexibility within the park code to allow staff to interpret, to prove, uh, approve different designs or amenities. Uh, typically a play structure would be required, but however, since they are preserving those Oregon white oaks, um, staff believe and, um, have outlined in the staff report that the pickleball courts and the additional amenities with the open space areas and trail are sufficient to, um, kind of replace the park, uh, the play structure. Uh, next slide, please. And then additionally, this just highlights the additional park and open space areas throughout the entire site. So this is, uh, goes along the northeast portions of the site, the creeks, so track A and B is the stormwater pond and the riparian buffer. And then there's a trail that wraps around from the east side to the southern boundary through track Bs and D. Um, and then within our staff report and potential, uh, uh, potential community park is an option with the city as the city has updated its park recreation open space plan this year. Um, so there's upon further coordination between the applicant and the city, um, you can either go with the option of providing this family park or option two is dedicating the, that family park and these open space areas as a community park. Next slide, please. Um, so diving into the critical areas, um, so there are fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And this is a type N S stream, which is a non-fish bearing stream in a riparian buffer and also Oregon white oaks. And then, um, there are three different type of geologically hazardous areas on the site. Next slide, please. Uh, so for the stream and riparian buffer, which is shown here, um, that white area on the map, um, there are some proposed permanent impacts and temporary impacts here. Uh, permanent impacts is the proposed pedestrian trail impacting the southern side of that. Um, riparian buffer just on the north side of lots twenty-four through twenty-seven and on the western edge of that buffer as well. Um, and then the temporary impacts are for grading from the road, the proposed road and stormwater facility on the site. Um, the proposed mitigation includes native riparian plantings and creation of wildlife, wildlife snag and logs for those trees that do need to be removed for site improvements. Um, so those trees will remain on site as logs or snags for, uh, ecological functions and critical habitat for species. Um, and also part of the mitigation, they are planting, uh, three hundred and sixty-seven trees for those twenty-four trees removed. Um, and then lastly, per code, um, with a riparian buffer, uh, no lots can be subdivided within that riparian buffer. So they, we did condition within the staff report that lots twenty-six and twenty-seven, as they barely bisect that buffer, but they need to be adjusted out of that riparian buffer. Next slide, please. Um, the next item are the Oregon white oaks. There are twenty-three Oregon white oaks on site, which are a priority habitat species and are protected by, um, W D F W. And as a fish and wildlife habitat conservation area, um, they're removing two of these twenty-three Oregon white oaks on the site. Um, and staff do recognize the applicant's efforts of protecting the majority of these Oregon white oaks on the site. Um, and the applicant has coordinated with, uh, W D F W for further mitigation. And we do have an exhibit from W D F W, um, approving of the proposed mitigation from the client or the applicant. Um, so, and that includes planting a hundred and sixteen Oregon white oaks and other native plants for removing those two Oregon white oaks. Um, invasive species removal and creation of snacks and downwood and, um, the other items as listed up there. Next slide, please. Um, so this is for the geologically hazardous areas. There's three of these on the site. First is a mapped landslide hazard area for slopes greater than forty percent on the site. And also for severe erosion hazard areas. Um, and these occur on either side of the creek in the northeast portions of the site. Um, the geotechnical report that was submitted with the application discusses the current of this landslide hazard, uh, with recommended buffers. However, those buffers do not comply with the buffers, uh, that are within the critical areas ordinance. And so therefore they've been conditioned to provide buffers that are within those required standards. Um, also, the landslide hazard buffer was not provided within the geotechnical report. Um, in tandem with the provided site plan, so, uh, staff is also asking, uh, additional information provided to be provided with the geot. So staff is also asking additional information provided, to be provided with the geotech report to address those items. And then lastly, per our pre-application notes and mapping, there is an occurrence of severe erosion hazard areas. And the geotechnical report did not discuss the occurrence of those. So again, we, we conditioned them to provide an updated geotechnical report to address that severe erosion hazard area. And then lastly, our seismic hazard areas. There are site class D soils for amplification from an earthquake. And we are just asking that they be conditioned to hear to all the recommendations in the provided geotechnical report because it does indeed address that within the report. Next slide. And tree preservation. First, as I hinted earlier, we commend the applicant's efforts for preserving Oregon white oaks, but also other trees within the site. And they have provided and explored different alternative site plans with up to hundred lots proposed at one point. And more trees have been preserved by reducing the lot count from a hundred to eighty-four. For example, along twenty-fourth circle, there was lots fronting there. And since now we have no lots fronting there on twenty-fourth circle in Southview Heights, they were able to preserve, I believe, about eighty-seven trees there. However, the applicant is removing one thousand and fifty-nine trees. However, staff have determined within the staff report and the tree cutting approval requirements that all these impacts are due to permitted development. And the applicant is still preserving two hundred and nineteen trees and planting at a one-to-one ratio per, per code. And staff are recommending approval. And at this point, I'm handing it off to Tony.
Thanks. My name is Tony Cooper. I'm the city engineer for La Center. And the first thing I'd like to do is to eliminate three conditions from the staff report that don't apply to the subdivision. So on page, I think it's page fifty-three of the staff report, should be fifty-three if the engineering condition starts with the condition number twelve. It refers to another subdivision and it needs to be eliminated.
Just delete the whole condition?
Yes. And as well as the next page thirteen and fourteen, both of those refer to other subdivisions and they were inadvertently placed on the staff report by accident. So those three, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen do not apply.
Okay.
So I'm going to start off with transportation. The applicant submitted a traffic report by a licensed traffic engineer. And the traffic report showed that there would be eighty-four, excuse me, seven hundred and ninety-four daily trips, fifteen, fifty-nine AM peak hour trips and seventy-nine, seventy-nine peak hour trips and fifty-nine AM, AM peak hour trips. So first thing I'd like to do is I know there was one public comment about the trap, the number of trips. And I just wanted to say that the traffic engineer used what's called the trip generation manual, which is by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And it is a nationally recognized manual for all jurisdictions and traffic engineers throughout the country to determine trips for any kind of development. And single family development is one of those. So the applicant used that single family, the single family model, which, which they, that was developed using hundreds of single family residents across the country to develop those models. So it's generalized as being a way to nationally calculate trips. So there is also what's called a spreadsheet that goes along with this that is used by, by transportation engineers to determine these trips. So I have that and I actually checked all their numbers. And these are, these are accurate numbers according to the trip generation manual. So I just want to bring that up. That's a question for anybody. The next thing is there's two, two access points from the site. One is North Fork and one is East Gaither. And the traffic, traffic report looked at the trip generation, a trip distribution and found that there would be sixty percent trips that would use the North Fork, Twenty-Sixth Avenue new, new intersection. And then about forty percent would use the East Gaither and Twenty-Fourth Circle access point. So that was for the, for the report. The next thing they did is they looked at the line of sight of both of these intersections and found that according to the Astro manual, it, it meets the line of sight for these intersections. One thing they, the traffic report did mention is that there's, there'll be a foliage on the intersection of North, North Fork and the new intersection. So one of the conditions that the city is going to, is going to oppose is that, that, that vegetation and that foliage be trimmed regularly to allow the, the adequate line of sight. And that will be imposed in the CCORs for the, for the HOA. Next thing, sorry. Next, next slide. The public road standards. So the new development will be required to provide full street improvements along all of the interior streets according to local's access standard, ST fifteen, which is a thirty-two foot wide curb, curb requirement. And on North Fork, betting their property, they are required to complete half-street improvements according to the street classification and that, and North Fork is classified as a major collector. So they, they have to widen the street, the half-street to comply with that, that standard. Twenty-fourth Circle abuts the property to the south. However, there is a five-foot strip in there, which I will talk about later. So there will be no public improvements required on Twenty-Fourth Circle. And so the next thing I want to talk about stormwater. So any site that clears or removes vegetation of more than five hundred square foot area is, has to comply with the city's stormwater, stormwater ordinance or the erosion control ordinance. And so that, that requires that any kind, any kind of strip that they do, vegetation, they have to comply with this. They have to make sure that there's no erosion. They're going to be required to install all sorts of what's called BMPs to prevent that erosion from happening on the site. In addition, Department of Ecology requires that a construction stormwater permit needs to applies and have to, will need to apply for construction stormwater permit for any area disturbed over one acre. And so that, they look at, they look at waters of the state and make sure that, that they're not imposing any kind of silt or anything to that. So they, I guess what I'm saying is the applicant will be required to comply with all sorts of erosion control standards that are up for our ordinance. The next thing is any additive previous surface over two thousand square feet needs to comply with the stormwater, our stormwater regulations, our stormwater code. And that will require that they provide what's called water quality treatment of stormwater and detention of stormwater from the site. This, this first picture, what it shows is generally the site has two points of slope of the existing, the existing drainage basin. And the, the south part of it, there's not very much that drains to the south. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to put area, area drains to the back lots of just these lots funding Twenty-Fourth Circle and tying to the storm system in Twenty-Fourth Circle. And then some catch bases on, on East Gaither. So next, next slide. So this, this shows the stormwater pond at the north, northeast corner of the site. And so most of the site slopes to that, slopes in that direction. But the, the applicant will provide that pond and pipe all of the stormwater from the streets, the lots directly to this pond. It'll receive what's called water quality treatment and detention before it outfalls to the east to this existing ravine. One thing I'm going to talk about is this five-foot wide vegetated strip. Right now, what, what happened was when Southview Heights was planted, there was a five-foot strip that was supposed to be maintained by the HOA of, of that development. Right now, it's, it's got kind of dilapidated fence falling down and it's not maintained at all. The street that Twenty-Fourth Circle was actually constructed to full street standards according to that plat, according to the original drawings for Southview, Southview Heights. So the city will not impose any kind of additional street improvements. But one thing the city will condition is that this is, this five-foot strip was purchased by the applicant, by the owner, that the vegetation or the open space or some type of vegetation be replaced in that five-foot strip. So that it, it will be, it will look appropriate and won't be an eyesore for everybody. So, and then so, in addition, I believe they have to put a chain link backs along there too, for an open space. One thing that they do have to comply with is ADA access. So the sidewalk along Twenty-Fourth Circle on South Side will have to be, will have to connect with ADA ramps to the East Gaither and to this development. Next slide, next slide, please. And actually, if you go to the next slide, it's probably easier for me to talk, talk about the map. So originally, East Gaither was has a bear gate, had a bear, has a bear gate at the very north end of it. It was originally intended for that street to be extended. It was kind of obvious that that was the case. The sewer was stubbed to the north of that street for future extension. So the applicant is proposing to connect all of their sewer to this stormwater manhole or pipe that is in East Gaither. One of the things that we are going to require is that the applicant determine the condition of that existing pipe and manhole because it has not been looked at in a long time. So I think they will have to investigate it, make sure it's, it's operable for, for connection. Next slide, please. There are any more slides? No slides, okay. So the only other thing I add were, were final conditions. I, I don't include, I didn't include all the conditions, but the general conditions are that the applicant provide that vegetation along the north side of Twenty-Fourth Circle. They provide ADA access. They investigate the sewer system to make sure it's operable for, for connection. And I think that was generally it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it from the city?
Yes.
Okay. I just had one question and a request. Can, can you submit?
People ready for it?
If, there's somebody online? If, are you testifying on behalf of the city? Or somebody, we're not hearing you now. If there was somebody who wanted to say something on behalf of the city, go ahead. But if otherwise, please hold your testimony until we go to public testimony. Okay. Can I get a copy of the city's PowerPoint presentation that provides me a nice summary? Oh, my question was on, what's on pages twenty-seven and forty-nine, condition A nineteen on forty-nine. What does it say? Condition nineteen on page forty-nine says, park, the last sentence says, parking spaces shall be within the twenty-foot required garage setback. I assume that means driveway parking spaces, since they also have parking spaces in the garage.
Mr. Hearing Examiner, that is correct.
Okay.
That's to clarify with our low density residential code. We do have a reduced front yard setback provision. And so that's just to clarify, even if you have that reduced front yard setback, when the applicant, if they choose so at the, during development review and engineering review, have that front, reduce, front yard, reduce setback, that their driveway is going to be twenty feet no matter what, even with their, their front, their living area, the home closer to the street, those twenty feet.
Thank you. I figured that's what it was. Just wanted to make sure that condition didn't create any issues in the future. Okay, I don't have any more questions from the city. Is the applicant here representing?
Mason Wolf was Wolf Project Management, representing the applicant. Address twenty-four oh one, West Main Street, Suite two-ten, Battleground, Washington nine eight six zero four. The applicant only has a few things to add to what the staff has already covered well. And part of it is, might be a question as, as much of a request. Condition on page fifty, starting on page fifty-four, condition fifteen. And again, Tony, you would have to correct me, appears to be a repeat of condition ten. And same with sixteen, sixteen appears to be a repeat of condition eleven. And if they're identical, obviously it doesn't hurt anything, but there, there are differences. I just, I want to avoid conflict.
So I think there are.
They're identical?
They're identical. So. One is talking about the. Yes, it is. So one of the could be deleted, probably fifteen.
Fifteen and sixteen.
No, sixteen is talking about street lights.
I think eleven does the same thing.
Oh, let me see. Yes, you are right. So delete sixteen too.
Okay.
Fifteen, sixteen, yes.
Thank you. And then we had one other request on a previous, our previous plat that, that we represented on. We had had condition twelve reworded to have some leniency about connecting every house to a stormline, stormline versus having what they call repulse through the curb into the street gutter, which is common. We don't necessarily always run pipe to every last inch. And so what we came to a conclusion on or agreement on, on that previous one was a, a, a different reading of the two, first two sentences of paragraph twelve, or I'm sorry, par, I'm sorry, condition ten.
Ten.
Page fifty-two. I can either read it or I can submit the other approval as an exhibit. But it's a condition thirty-four of the final order of Valley View.
Oh, go ahead and read it. And I'd appreciate if you'd submit it as well, so I have it written down.
It reads, if feasible, downspouts connections from the houses must connect directly into the, the site stormwater system. If connection of downspouts to the storm system is not feasible and downspouts may be connected together by curb drains.
Okay. So do you have any objection to that?
Yes, that's acceptable. If, and that will be determined during engineering review. So we'll have to determine whether or not, yeah, all of those pipe, all, all of the connections can be done underground. And if, if not, they can, they can go to curb drains.
You want, there's now?
Sure. Just so we don't forget. Thank you.
Other than that, we actually concur with the city on all, all other issues. They've addressed the stormwater conditions and the transportation issues. A letter came in late that I skimmed, talked about whether or not the roads that are existing can handle additional traffic. While we don't always agree with the existing code and the required maintenance or the design of the roads. Those designs, those roads have all been designed for future connection. That's why there was a stub. And the city has standards for what you have to build those to, thickness of asphalt, the subgrade, et cetera. And we can meet all of that, what was code when we were vested. As well as the geotechnical questions, the habitat questions, the buffer questions. They were all determined by existing code and working with fish and wildlife, working with the city and working within the code as it's written.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So anybody who'd like to testify in support of, one more thing?
Sorry, I did forget one little, it's a correction on page fifty-one, condition six under four dot B. The last part of the first sentence that says owned and maintained by Southview Heights. It actually was never owned. It never got turned over by the previous developer. And so it was never owned by that HOA, it was owned by the previous developer.
Okay.
And again, maintenance was in question. And actually regarding. And actually regarding that five-foot strip, while it is the intention to make something happen with that five-foot strip, the applicant is against conditioning any requirements as while it might be owned by the applicant, it is not part of the plat. It is further clouded by who really has the authority to do what with it. It's not technically right of way. The previous plat, Southview Heights, said the HOA to, for that plat was supposed to maintain it and own it, and so it's clouded. And we think it's impractical to condition this.
Just so I'm clear on Condition 6, you want to change it to, was formerly owned by the developer of the Southview Heights development?
Correct.
And do you want any changes to the language of that condition?
Well, the, the language of the condition is fine.
Yeah, okay.
We're, we're okay with it as it's written, but I didn't know if Tony was trying to change that. I was unclear.
No, I, I probably, I mean, the plat just said it was being, to be maintained. It did talk about, I don't recall it talking about ownership, but you know, it was not owned by them. It was owned by the previous owner, yeah, I don't.
But as far as the condition itself, do you want any more than what, what was written?
No, I just want to make sure that it is somehow brought up to some standard for vegetation to, to, to look good. And, and that can be left up to you to kind of look at options for that. We could look at that during design. Is that?
So that's different than what's written. So I just want to try to clarify. I agree with the way it's written, and I don't think we should condition it to be required only because of the gray area, the cloud of what the applicant can be forced to do. However, it is the applicant's intentions to address this, whether it be the future owner and the HOA takes care of this in conjunction with the HOA of Southview Heights as a partnership, or whether it goes back to Southview Heights and they take, take over as was originally planned, is unclear, but it is the intention that it will, because of course, they want it to look good for the future development.
Hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
So anybody else who'd like to testify in support of this application? Is anybody online at all?
Are we, the rest of you just have?
No, if you want to testify in support of the application, in, in support of the development, I'll go to anybody who wants to, opposition or with questions next. I just want to make sure there's nobody online that. Okay. Anybody, who wants to go first to testify in opposition or with questions or concerns? Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up, please.
John Nguyen, 2220 East Gaither, the center.
How do you spell your last name?
W-Y-N-N, representing myself and my wife.
Thank you.
Karen Denny.
What was her name?
Denny, D-E-N-N-E, Karen.
Thank you.
So we're relatively new to the area. We've been here just now two years, and we came from Northern California where obviously we have a just bad situation with fires. When we first came out here, one of the first things that we noticed was just the access and the lack of access in case there's something that really takes place with this additional burden on the roads and looking at every possible scenario that could potentially happen in a wildfire that happens. Has there been any type of study at all that's representing or, or addressing what that potentially might look like and what the increased risk is in addition with, with this development?
Okay. All that staff, when, when we get, after everybody's testified, I'll have staff in the app, give staff and the applicant the opportunity to respond to all these questions. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Al Luiz, L-U-I-Z, the address is 2188 East Gaither Avenue. And while I'm pro-development, I do have some concerns. One, that area has been prone to underground springs. When they developed the apartments that are above right close to the vineyard there, we experienced for the first time water in our, in our basement and under our house. So I have some concerns as to what will happen when they start developing that property and if it develops into damages for property owners below. Whether there's a fund set aside for it or people can get it, I know with me, it cost me almost $40,000 to get it fixed. So that was one thing. The second thing is traffic. Seeing your report, 40% on Gaither Avenue, I have a concern that we don't have anything to slow the traffic down when they're coming out of that development, whether it's a stop sign at the corner of Lucas and Gaither, just to get it slowed down. It's a downhill grade, people already go fast, and you add that into commute traffic coming in and then going out to work and that, I think that could be a problem. Also with the access now going back out, I call it Aspen, but the other exit coming out, we've got a new development at the top of Aspen, which is on a curve.
Is Aspen same as North Fork?
Yes, yeah. It's not interchangeable, but I don't know where it changes.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
There's, there's an issue there on the curve with the people going into that new development because there's no vision for them to see the traffic coming out. And then once this other development goes in, it could present a problem. Also, potentially on 18th Avenue, maybe making a stop sign there. These are just thoughts that I had on that. The other thing is, is when they were make, doing that last development, either, sorry, Tony, either the city inspection or what was not doing a good job of watching the, them grading the land. We had dust and dirt that covered pretty much the whole development. It was a disaster. So my concern would be when they're doing the grading and that, that we get some good follow-up, that we make sure that we keep the dust and dirt down. And that's all I have, but thank you.
Okay. On that last issue, the applicant is required to implement erosion control, including dust control. If they're not doing it, the best way to do, address that is contacting the city and they will.
That happened at the last development. And we did contact the city and it did not happen. They did not get it corrected.
Okay.
So it's an issue that I want to.
Yeah. In that case, I'd go to the city council.
I, I will do that.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to testify? Yes, ma'am.
Marcia Adams, and it's A-D-A-M-S, and my husband Charles. We live on 24th Circle, and we put in our concerns. I, either I'm missing it or I don't see a commitment on what they're doing on that five-foot that supposedly they claimed it or bought it or whatever, but I'd like to have more of a commitment on what's being done since all the fence in front of our house, you know, has been falling down. Everybody's fence is falling down and nothing's been maintained on it. So I would like a little more of a commitment on whether they're going to take care of that. I don't feel like it's our responsibility any longer if they bought that, so.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Celeste Monroe, M-O-N-R-O-E. I live at 2142 East Gaither. My first question or concern relates to traffic. I share Al Luiz's concerns about the volume of traffic coming up and down the street. Because of the steepness of the hill, people come down fast or they gun it to try to get up the hill, and it's noisy, and what kind of provisions are going to be made for that? My second concern is more short-term, and I need a clarification. I believe that I read that there will be no construction access during, during construction to, on East Gaither, that it will go through North Fork. We have a strong preference for not wanting to have construction access going up and down that street. It's bad enough with cars, it will be a nightmare with trucks coming up and down the street. I want to reiterate Al Luiz's concerns about the water runoff. There was a historical issue with both our property and with other properties where people had to spend tens of thousands of dollars to remediate the water runoff issues from the build on our street. And I'm not a geologist, I don't really understand, right, the reparations, the mitigations that are being done by the builder, but I'd like to know what happens if they don't work and things get considerably worse and those expenses come back to us as homeowners. What kind of support are we going to get from the city to make sure that, that will be reimbursed or in some form or fashion for any kind of expenses that we occur as a result of this?
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else who'd like to say anything about this application? Yes.
Valerie Post, P-O-S-T. I also represent my dad, Pat Conti, C-O-N-T-E.
C-O, I'm sorry.
C-O-N-T-E.
C-O-N, like Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Once I write it down, I can, go ahead.
35602 Northeast North Fork Avenue. And our question is mainly where is the water coming from that's going to feed this development?
Potable, public water?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is that source?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me, sir?
W-O-R-K-M-A-N.
Oh, Workman, thank you. And what was your wife's name?
Workman.
Yeah. What was your, your, your wife's name? Did you say that?
Linda.
Linda, thank you.
1220 East Lucas. Two concerns. The documents say that the stormwater plant will be publicly owned but maintained by the HOA. What does that mean?
I'll ask staff to clarify that. They can do a lot better job than I could.
And then I concur with the concerns about the traffic on Gaither, particularly when the schools get back in session and we have traffic, school buses coming up and down during the dark morning hours and late afternoon hours. It's going to be a nightmare. I'm really very concerned about that. And the fact that we're having to cut down over a thousand trees is, makes me wonder how much we're going to be able to accomplish with these stormwater program that's put in place. I don't know enough about it, but I'm concerned.
That I can address kind of quickly. The applicant's required to, stormwater runs off at a specific rate. You take out the trees, it runs off faster. If it's a heavily, they're required to calculate what the runoff rate would be from pre-development before anything came in, before La Center existed, forested condition. So they had a runoff at that rate. They have to meet or, or below that rate. So they have to retain more water than is currently leaving the site.
I'm just worried about the runoff that'll impact 24th Avenue and then below that, East Hightman and then.
24th and what was the second street?
East Hightman, H-E-I-T-M-A-N.
Thank you.
And then Lucas, East Lucas.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. I feel you.
My name is Lisa Apple, A-P-P-E-L, 1235 East Lucas Street, La Center, Washington, 98629. And I'll say ahead of time, Mr. Turner, I have many questions posed in the public comments I prepared today, and so I ask that they wait to be addressed until the entirety of my.
Okay.
Comments are presented. My partner Craig Tylenda was not able to be here. He also, his last name is T-Y-L-E-N-D-A, also resides at 1235 East Lucas Street, La Center, Washington, 98629. He dictated these comments to me while he was at the airport today.
Good for him.
So forgive me if they're direct.
And if you want to submit that, I'd appreciate it, just so we have it in writing as well.
Thank you. First of all, I am upset, I am upset that the date of the hearing was changed from June 26th to June 25th. The reason being, the city staff appear to have the inability to schedule meetings. I'd planned on being here tonight, but the date changed and I am on a business trip. I'm going to frame my comments on what we lose and what we gain in this development. What we lose, 20 acres of carbon capture and sequestration in direct opposition to Washington State's stated carbon neutrality goal, for which there are many, for which they are regulating many industries. Losing 29 acres of stormwater uptake, lose habitat for mountain and alpine birds that come down to stay in this area in the winter and cold months. Lose the La Center Vista that will now be filled with development. What we get, more traffic, more congested roads, more speeding down hills endangering people and pets, reduce property values and more taxes. The fact is, this is all about money, pure and simple, and I wonder who it really is going to. Furthermore, I oppose any further annexation of land into the city of La Center.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you want to hand me that, I'll, I'll make it part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else who hasn't had a chance to testify? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, sir, I, I do have separate comments.
Yeah, that's, go for it. I'm sorry.
No problem. This is a public comment on the SEPA determination of nonsignificance for Vineyard Vista subdivision proposed development. This comment is being submitted in writing to the city of La Center in addition to my presentation of these comments at the June 25th public hearing. Note, I am disappointed that only one of the two public comments I submitted on May 15th, 2024, were documented and acknowledged by the city in the June 25th, 2024 hearing packet, especially when I expressly requested it be included as email comment. Whether you thought my comment was ill-considered, it was polite. It's immaterial to your job to lawfully document and consider it in this process. Again, for the record, my name is Lisa Apple, resident of 1235 East Lucas Street. I am present to make comments on the city of La Center decision to make a SEPA determination of nonsignificance for the proposed Vineyard Vista subdivision development. I disagree with this decision. The impacts of this project as currently defined are indeed significant, and the project should be reevaluated and redesigned to reduce those negative impacts. First of all, the volume of earth proposed for moving. This is a proposed development on the top of a hill above an existing subdivision. The site itself has steep slopes ranging from 40 to 50% in some areas. To be able to build on this site, earthwork will need to completely transform it. According to project documents, developer wants to cut and embank an area of 25 acres, meaning nearly 90% of the property will be cleared and excavated with an expected volume of 60,000 cubic yards of earth moved. These changes are monumental and significant. Construction erosion control. During construction at the top of the hill above my home and hundreds of homes in the neighborhood, there will be 25 acres of bare soil. The potential for soil erosion and rain events is huge. Is there an example of an erosion mitigation plan for 25 acres of bare soil on top of a hill? What does that look like? How do you stop water from flowing downhill? How do you stop soil from blowing off the site, coating houses, cars, and landscaping with a thick coat of dust? I agree with the assessment of my neighbor that the previous development caused dust to be distributed throughout the neighborhood. I was cleaning it off the windows, the cars, and everything else. This impact is significant. Stormwater management plan assumptions. I'm concerned about the stormwater management plan's assumption of 35% impervious surface. If 25 acres of earth are moved, that soil will be compacted by the construction equipment, reducing porosity and infiltration capacity. This will need to be done to provide a solid foundation for 84 homes. Compacted lawn does not have the same drainage capacity as a natural forest. In Vista View, in Southview Heights, the yard soil is compacted. In Vista View, in Southview Heights, the yard soil is compacted clay. Adding soil conditioner has done little to improve the situation. You must be strong to even dig and chip away at a hole. We built raised beds to have a vegetable garden. Having a realistic understanding of the amount of stormwater being generated by this development is critical to its success. Because if it is wrong, or if it fails, the consequences could be devastating and flood people's backyards and damaging infrastructure. I question the ability of the project in its current design to hydrologically isolate itself on the top of a hill from all the land, homes, streets, infrastructure, and water features below it. I realize La Center municipal code requires that the owner must detain and treat all onsite stormwater. I ask you, are you sure that this plan is adequate? Tree removal and loss of ecosystem services. Because there will be hundreds of thousands of gallons of new stormwater to be managed, consider the proposed tree removal. The tree study cites one thousand fifty-nine trees with a greater than ten-inch diameter will be removed, including two white oaks. Those are large trees. The current plan will only retain two hundred and eighteen trees onsite that are that large, and presumably will cut down another one hundred and ninety-two that are smaller than a ten-inch diameter. The current one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine trees onsite play a crucial role in managing stormwater. Their leaf canopies intercept rain and reduce erosion caused by falling rain. Their roots take up water, creating conditions that promote infiltration. According to the U.S. Forest Service, depending on the size and the species, a single tree can store-
Instead of reading that, I will review it. Can you summarize your issues? Because we've been going on for a while. I appreciate that-
Sir, the, the meeting goes till seven thirty?
I am, it's, it's not the duration, it's I want to give everybody a chance to testify.
Oh.
And if you could, it's part of the record if you submit it in writing, and if, there's no, reading it into your, into the record doesn't make it any more powerful.
It's healthy for me. I spend less than a lot of time, but I would certainly step aside, sir.
No, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am, please. Go ahead.
According to the U.S. Forest Service, depending on the size and the species, a single tree can store around a hundred gallons or more of water, at least until it reaches saturation after about one or two inches of rainfall. Additionally, branches and stems can capture and store up to fifteen percent of total rainfall, while a large tree might retain as much as three hundred and thirty-two gallons of water. Let us assume that each of these large trees to be cut down can absorb the mean, two hundred and sixteen gallons of water in a one-inch rainfall. That means removing one thousand fifty-nine trees will result in two hundred and twenty-eight, seven hundred and forty-four thousand gallons of stormwater that will no longer be absorbed, recognizing this is an approximation of a one-inch rainfall event. Consider the meteorological records. This area received eleven point three four inches of rain in January twenty twenty-four, and the mean annual amount of fifty-two point two one inches per year from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-four. It's officially battleground Washington data available from the National Weather Service. There is a lot of rain, and thus a large volume of stormwater to manage. The loss of those trees represents a tremendous loss of ecosystem services that are currently protecting all the homes below the forest now. Stormwater impacts. Again, I realize that municipal code dictates that the development retains and treats all stormwater. I am still not comfortable with the physics of the situation. Consider the facts of the site. I have photos to illustrate my point. The first photo is the view shed. And, Mr. Turner, I have prepared a photo to share with you
Okay.
for you to see.
Thank you.
The first photo-
Which way are we looking? Are we looking, in this photo, are we looking south?
Okay, so I'll share this with the group as well. This is Amber Park, looking uphill in the view shed.
Okay, so that's south, the houses are in Southview Heights?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the line of trees above.
Thank you. Thank you, that, that helps me orient myself.
This photo shows a proposed development location from afar. Those are large trees, maybe fifty, seventy-five to a hundred feet, towering over the neighborhood, providing protection and beauty. With this proposed development, those trees and hilltop will be nearly bare. This is a significant environmental change. The second photo, which many will recognize. The second photo shows a location of the proposed connection site between the developments. You can see as I stood street level to take this photo that the hilltop site is above grade the neighborhood below. The slopes get more extreme the further you walk into the site. Everything on that site will naturally drain downhill into backyards, into the Vista View and Southview Heights stormwater system. The proposed stormwater pond is uphill from this location. The third photo is the opposite view. I turned directly around and taking this photo. This shows East Gaither Avenue. The street will function as a concrete aqueduct during a rain event, distributing water downhill. This is a significant environmental impact. Notice the cracks on the street. How will this change when an additional seven hundred and ninety-two cars a day drive on this street? These two subdivisions should not be connected by, for cars. There needs to be a burn between the two sites. The roads are not built for seven hundred and ninety-two more daily car trips speeding down the hill. Furthermore, the street connections simply amplify the risks that stormwater will follow the easiest route downhill instead of being pumped uphill to the stormwater detention basin. How will, and when the water flows downhill, how will the Southview Heights Park stormwater detention basin manage this new volume of water if there's any failure in the proposed design? What if the assumptions made in the stormwater design cannot handle the volume of stormwater actually produce? There are devastating consequences downstream. This is a significant environmental impact. Who is going to pay to maintain the proposed stormwater detention basin? Who is going to responsibly execute the maintenance? Assume, I assume there will be pumps that will pump water uphill to the proposed stormwater detention basin. What happens if one of those pumps fail? Who is unresponsible for the consequences? Is it Lincoln Wolverton? Is it Wolf Group LLC? Is it NHOA? Is it the City of La Center? Who will pay for property damage repairs and necessary infrastructure improvements if this does not work or fails? My current backyard is already very wet in the spring, and there's drainage installed there, and I am monitoring it. Is, quote, someone going to pay for an upgrade since they are the responsible party for the action and earning a profit over it? Or will neighbors be forced to subsidize the development's externalities? I advise you to please consider these questions and be upfront about it now. Watershed and wetland impacts. Apart from my concern about personal monetary impacts to my property and my neighbors, we all live in a watershed. And in this case, it appears to be Breezy Creek will receive the stormwater discharge from this development, altering the hydrological conditions and potentially cause flashy conditions. The greater volume of water traveling through the channel will degrade the stream bed and negatively impact aquatic insects and microhabitats. This creek discharge to La Center Bottoms, this creek discharges to La Center Bottoms and the La Center Wetlands Floodplain Restoration Project, a multi-agency, multimillion-dollar wetland restoration project. The La Center Bottoms already regularly floods during winter. While this is natural, adding to the volume of water that would have been absorbed by trees is not natural. That water becomes surface water instead of groundwater. I go down there in the winter to observe the breathtaking beauty of the wild swans, Cygnus columbianum, for which La Center is known, and artwork adorns our traffic circle. How will this excess stormwater affect their habitat? The Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership conducts ecosystem monitoring at the site to measure the effectiveness of large-scale wetland restoration. The last monitoring was conducted in twenty twenty. What will they find in twenty twenty-five? Will this site still be on track to become a high-quality salmon habitat? Or will it be flooded with eroded soil from the proposed Vineyard Vista subdivision construction site? While I appreciate the seventy-five-foot buffer in the critical area site, I am skeptical this will be sufficient to protect the creek and water quality. This should be increased to at a minimum a hundred feet, as requested by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife in their public comment. I also appreciated that a few snags were added, but this is just so small when you compare it to the proposed one thousand fifty-nine trees removed and twenty-five acres of earth to be moved, cut, and embanked. Transportation. Lastly, the transportation impacts are significant relative to the current traffic level now. Right now, there are maybe thirty trips a day on Lucas Street. This traffic study cites an additional seventy, seven hundred and ninety-two trips a day from this subdivision, and this is an estimate. It seems likely to be more. It seems likely that at least half will cut through Vista View South and up Gaither Street, just estimating, but that is at least eighty times increase from current traffic levels. And people invariably speed downhill due to this deep slope. What about Eighteenth Street? That road is already showing wear and tear. Who will pay for the repairs and maintenance from the additional traffic? Will construction trucks be cutting through the subdivision? What about the people who drive North Fork Avenue? They already have a narrow road. Concerns about notice project documents and public comment process. The two public comment processes as presented by the City of La Center are confusing and unreasonable in their execution for the typical person. There were approximately six project documents posted at the close of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, which was at the end of that public comment period process. A few weeks later, there were approximately twenty documents posted about this project. As of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, there were forty documents posted about this proposed project. These documents all have various dates on them, and there's no way to reasonably discern when they were actually posted by staff and if they are current or old information. During the May fifteenth process, I recall seeing a design that included four stormwater detention basins. Now there's one. I regret not taking screenshots and downloading the documents over the past month to understand the project evolution over time. And quite frankly, it is an unimpressive day for public involvement professionals that this is the place we're at now. Also, how is one reasonably understand the actual scope of the project if the project materials keep changing? From what I heard from my neighbors, the city was strict about not accepting comments after May fifteenth. My neighbors and I tried to do our best to inform the neighborhood a few days before May fifteenth and handed out the project plans, which were only mailed to a few people three hundred feet from the project. Of course, we had just found out about it, too. I felt like I was doing the city's job. The library helped, as they will let you make copies up to three dollars a day. Still, it only covered the cost of a few packets. This was hardly enough time for people to really review and understand the project documents to make informed comments. So the comment period strictly closed May fifteenth. Consider the current comment period. When did it actually open? Was it June fifth? As dated on this document? In the notice statement? Or was it June tenth, as indicated in the hearing packet? How would a reasonable person know when it opened? What documents were posted at the time of June fifth? What documents were posted at the time of June tenth? What documents were posted after that time? Again, I cannot tell, and I do not know if the project scope is changing. It is clear that in the June fifth notice document where one should submit written comment, it is not clear in the June fifth notice document where one should submit written comments, nor did it include a live web link to the hearing like the Larson subdivision notice did. Is this intentional by the City of La Center staff to reduce public comment? Speaking of changing scope, I see many inconsistencies in numbers in the materials posted as of today. For example, the notice statement published June fifth, twenty twenty-four cites the development size as twenty-six point four six acres, while the SEPA checklist cites twenty-nine point five three acres. Where did the three point oh seven acres go? And on page seventeen of the public hearing packet cites twenty-nine point four six acres. I also do not know how to resolve the claims on page forty-one of the packet that there are eighteen point six one acres of net developable land on the site, yet twenty-five acres of earth will be cut and embanked. How can one evaluate the scope and impact of the project if it is inconsistently defined in project materials and, or appears to give conflicting information? I do not mean to pick on city staff, so I am sorry for that. It's healthy for me to be here and for us to be in the room together, and I appreciate that. So thank you for having this hearing. I can see an effort is being made to fulfill municipal code requirements. And of course, you must consider the application. I heard that the permit fee Mr. Wolverton will be paying is over one million dollars to the City of La Center. And staff, please do feel free to correct me on that number if I am in error. That appears to be an attractive partnership for the city. However, please consider things from my perspective, which includes potentially the following: seven hundred and ninety-two more cars a day speeding past your house down the hill, which now there are thirty, animals and pets being run over, flooding in your backyard that could destabilize and damage your landscaping and house, tax increases to support new infrastructure or retrofit existing infrastructure, and sediment-laden stormwater polluting the community's cherished wetlands. It gets real very quick when you live down slope from this proposed development and consider the risks. For me, it is all risk and negative impact. There are other concerns that I did not write about related to the capacity of the La Center post office to handle the new mail, landslide and earthquake risks, noise pollution, water and sewer line connections, and capacity for who will pay for the costly infrastructure to support this proposed development? I urge you to pause and consider these risks and true costs of the proposed Vineyard Vista subdivision project. The direct and indirect impacts are real and significant. This project needs to be scaled back and requires further consideration. The determination of SEPA non-significance should be rescinded by the city, and a full environmental impact assessment should be required. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I was just curious if Lincoln Wolverton is present today, the owner. Thank you. I was curious if he would be here this evening. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today and your consideration of these comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Apple, Ms. Apple, Ms. Apple, can you please submit your, those written comments as well? I tried to keep up, but if, if at all, it's much easier to follow. And I'm going to include your photos as, as part of that same exhibit. Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything about this application? Is there anybody? Oh, I'm sorry, I did see you back there. Go ahead, come on up.
Kristy Humphrey, one, zero, three, zero, East Twenty-Fourth Circle. The main comment I have is that the documents that we've been reviewing, they're, they're not consistent in the naming of the streets. I see northeast Twenty, Twenty-Fourth Avenue, northeast Twenty-Fourth Circle, northeast Gaither, but we're East Gaither, we're East Twenty-Fourth Circle, period. So I just want to make sure that, because it is sprinkled all throughout the documents, all different references. And then the other comment was, I just wanted to substantiate what others have said. Living on East Twenty-Fourth Circle, there is definitely the, the ground, the water flow down the street.
Oh, okay.
The groundwater. So that was it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Can I get you on the mic first, just to make sure we pick you up on the recording?
My name is Frank Fortino, F O R T I N O. And I live on one, nine, nine, three, East Hytman Circle. And I want to thank
Mr. Fortino, can you speak towards the microphone, just so we make sure we pick you up?
Yeah.
Thanks.
You have opened my eyes to the potential danger of water runoff. We live right downhill from that, from this proposed project. And we would definitely be affected by that. So, yeah, I mean, we, we need some definite answers as to what's going to happen. First of all, and making sure that we, we have the adequate drainage system. And secondly, if it fails, who's going to pick up the ball? And secondly, if it fails, who's going to pick up the ball? Because, you know, a lot of these developers, they're gone. They're moving on to the next one. We're stuck here, okay? You know, and I've seen too many times where it's the landowner that gets, that, you know, ends up having to pay for it. And if we could avoid having that happen, and let's do it now before we have a disaster on our hands, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room who'd like to... Yes, thank you. Is there anybody online? If... Well, he's come on. Come on up. If there is anybody online, go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to testify to. We'll get to those when we're done with people in person. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Chris Blair, last name B-L-A-I-R, resident of one-eight-four-seven East Gaither. I start out the question for the gentleman who brought the statistics of the trip generation up to us and the distribution between the two access points to the neighborhood. Can you tell me where that information appears in the traffic survey that's published online?
Yes, I can. I will address it.
Specifically, where it mentions the split between Gaither and so forth? How many times?
I can't remember what page, but I read it in there. I pulled all the information from that traffic report, so.
I see it. I just also like a comment that the city's traffic calming program objective number four states that it's to reduce cut-through traffic in neighborhoods.
What's that from?
It's on the city's traffic calming plan.
Okay, it's just called the city's traffic calming plan?
It's called the traffic calming program objectives.
Thank you.
Obviously, the cutting through Gaither and down through Gaither and Eighteenth and everywhere else is in direct conflict with that statement. I also like to point out that others have mentioned the other development that's atop of Aspen Worth work, being the sign out front that calls this a Stevens Hill Farm development. That's a new development. It has one way in and one way out, which is in compliance with the city's traffic management plans. I also note that West Sixteenth Street, right off of Aspen there, too, was never cut through to the other side of it. And East Seventh Street, just up here, just up the hill from here, is also not cut through for those reasons, just to calm traffic.
What was the name of that last street?
East Seventh.
Seventh? Thank you.
Correct. And those, you know, those things are done to mitigate what we will experience from this project if it goes through as planned. I would like to ask that those that have the knowledge in advance of what the traffic will look like when they move to the neighborhood are the ones that be the ones responsible for an understanding that that traffic will exist there and not ask people that live downhill from this development to live with the traffic that they have no control over and get any compensation for.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want to say anything?
Melissa Flat, six-six-zero, East Eighteenth Street.
And what was your last name?
Flat, F-L-A-T-T.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition to Mr. Blair's comment, Hannah Farms also only has one exit and one entrance for traffic calming. I live on East Eighteenth. I'm the second house from Gaither. And if we're going to have five hundred cars a day or whatever right there, I can tell you, I came to the May fifteenth city council meeting, and I spoke. I have people who run that stop sign on a daily basis. I have backed out of my driveway, and people pass me on my right. So if I do that, now what's going to happen when we have all that traffic coming down that hill? I'm not saying that you guys... But a gentleman who just left, when he used to walk the neighborhood, he was almost hit by a car in broad daylight that didn't stop at that stop sign. Sean Boyle said he would have somebody go out. The mayor said he would have officers go out and monitor that area during the winter storms. The ice at the bottom of that hill is horrible. There are two bus stops at the bottom of that hill. So if you have people, and I have lived there for nineteen years now, and those bus stops, bus stops have always been there. If that hill is a main thoroughfare, we need to move those bus stops. You have kindergartners on up that are left there by themselves. So I just really want traffic impact coming down that hill to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Kohlman. Last name is K-O-H-L-M-A-N. Address is two-one-six-seven East Gaither. My wife and I moved to this area about two years ago, and one of the things that we were attracted to was the fact that it was nice and quiet. Traffic was not significant, like it was where we moved from. To be honest with you, I've been kind of amazed in the short period of time that we've been here that we get an awful lot of traffic comes up Gaither off of Eighteenth and onto Lucas, because the way the streets are designed, it's too long a trip to go down Eighteenth and come up Lucas to wherever those residences are. To have that cut-through coming through from that new development onto Gaither is going to cause a ridiculous amount of traffic to come down that road. And to everybody else's point, at the very least, traffic control needs to happen. When I leave for work in the morning and I hit the stop sign at seventeen, at Eighteenth, I'm sorry, the crosswalk that's there that goes across to the new part from that new development, I see people crossing the street far more than I ever did when we moved in, and the traffic coming down North Fork is totally uncontrolled. I concern myself sometimes when I try and pull out to head south down Aspen to get into downtown La Center, because people will come around that corner so fast. By the time I check and see no traffic coming and go to pull into the intersection, there's somebody bearing down on me coming down that hill. It's going to be a real issue. And I know that you asked not to have repeated concerns brought up, but you need to understand the impact that that's going to have on this community, the water.
The stormwater runoff? Okay, I'm trying to make sure which water we're talking about.
Yeah, we had to have, that was one of the things we had to have taken care of at our house before we bought it. It was there's drainage issues there, tens of thousands of dollars that were spent to have that addressed. I'm very concerned that that's going to be a repeat problem, so.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room who wants to testify?
Karen Denny, D-E-N-N-E, two-two-two-zero, East Gaither Ave.
D-E-N-N-A?
E.
E, okay. I didn't... Thank you. That makes more sense. Go ahead.
My concern is, and it is not only with this specific development, but going on the city planning page, there is at least five, four or five listed that are proposed, along with all the other ones that are actually being built. So my question is, because I work in education, how is this actually going to impact the one grade school, the one junior high, and the one high school, even though it does say in the study that it's three thousand dollars per lot, which added up comes up to about two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand for that addition? And I have family in Ridgefield, and they're trying to get a new grade school built, and it's over seven million dollars. So I'm thinking, are we actually looking at the big impact on the school system? And we would also like a grocery store.
That I can't help you with, but... Anybody else who wants to testify? Is there anyone online with a raised hand? Okay. Any response from city staff?
Yes, I think I'll try to address some of these concerns.
Take my jacket. I'm dying here. Mr. Wolf?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, here.
Yes. Okay, what time is it now?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the request. So we'll convene at five after.
Yeah, I was making sure. I know that these, these up here, the sun comes in.
Yeah. Yeah, get some cross breeze. Yeah, it is cooler in the hallway.
Yeah, it is.
Now, these are all rolly chairs. Look, we can, worst case, it can sit in the doorway.
Yeah.
That does seem to help.
Hot.
Fun in the summer.
Yeah, I know. You can, you should let the hearings from small cities, don't you?
A lot of them, yeah.
Longview, Palama, Woodland.
Not Longview, but Palama, Woodland, Battle Ground.
Ridgefield?
Yep. Camus and Watchougal.
Yeah, because I've sat in some of the hearings from some of the other cities, too, and I've seen your face. I'm like, oh, I don't know if I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Tracy Coleman.
Hi, Tracy. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Your name is definitely familiar.
Well, I sent that email and said, well, some of your phone numbers are really probably...
That's why.
I'm pretty sure we're good to go ahead and have it, because Andrew was talking to me. Based on my last experience, but I worked in Woodland for the past, well, almost seven years with Travis Power.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I was there.
Travis for a year.
Yeah, I was a public works director there. That doesn't equal that.
Yeah.
And then I actually came here.
So what are you?
I'm a community development developer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I, I'm the same. I've never liked it. It's kind of like when you teach civil engineering, you have electrical workers. You have to take, just take any part of it, but you don't want to. It's part of my job that I don't want to do. I told Tony and I got here from the... Man, if you take any part of my job, what do you got? Because planning is just like, there's no instantaneous results.
Yes.
It's a lot of the planning, and it's a lot of wait, wait, wait. Yeah, 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 and so, it's a little bit. But when you do public works, it's instantaneous results. You go off, you run, you do, you see something, results, and you move on to the next one. Here it's like, you got to do this, you got to do that, you got to look at everything. I understand that. They're announcing the same thing.
They can talk about...
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about myself.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure we don't get in any issues.
Yes, yes. Thank you for doing that.
It's hard. That's what I want to talk about.
I know, I know. Yeah, but I, I'm impressed. I mean, that's all you do is just go to office.
Yeah, I also do several Oregon tour.
Where do you start?
Impressions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And it's always night, right?
Not necessarily.
Do you have daytime?
Yeah, Clackamas County starts at nine-thirty, Lockwood County starts at nine.
Wow!
Yeah, they're all late. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, I'm all...
Oh, you got to warm up.
Yeah, appreciate it. Just refilled it.
In the cold one?
Oh, no, it's cold out. This was cold when I got here.
I know. I'm like, oh. Next time, we'll have to offer ice packs for you to get back to your neck. I'll have to get a cooling chair for us to sit in, right?
I didn't realize those fans are there. Probably blowing up the heat down below.
You know, well, unless they're...
Sure they're intended to cool.
Unless they're blowing a different way, because I have...
Yeah.
It depends on which way it's spinning.
Circulated.
Yeah. But I do feel a little bit of that.
Me, too. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to take your seats, we'll go ahead and reconvene the hearing. Can I ask everyone to resume your seats? We'll go ahead and continue with the hearing, please. Okay, Mr. Cooper, did you want to start out?
Yeah, yes, I'll try to address some of these questions. I guess the first thing is, I'll talk about Underground, oh, sorry, Underground Springs. I can't tell you exactly what's happening right now in Underground Springs in Southview Heights. We have spring problems all over the city, and it happens in hills. What I could say is that when they strip the site, they have to be able to build the roads to collect all the stormwater and keep it off, running off the roads. They collect it and drain it directly to a pond, and the pond is what collects all the water. Now, the pond is designed to treat water and detain water. What happens is they have what's called emergency overflow in these ponds. And so if there was a storm that was, you know, just more than was expected, which would have to be pretty significant, because these ponds are designed for the two-to-one-hundred-year storm. So they're designed to allow emergency overflow so that the water goes downstream to another location, not down streets. So in general, engineering will, when they do engineering, it'll look at collecting all the stormwater in the streets with catch basins and not allowing it to drain all the way down the road and haphazardly. That's the whole basis of stormwater design. That's the whole basis of stormwater design and engineering design of these ponds. Now, I will say that. Yeah, I'll have to talk to the applicant about any kind of subsurface drainage that might need to be done in this subdivision, and it might be lots, it might be roads. There might be some additional things that the developer can look at, the engineer can look at, to try to alleviate some of the subsurface drainage. That can be looked at. But anything on the surface, the applicant is required by city code, by engineering design, they're required to collect all that stormwater and take it to a place where that's going to be detained and not create any additional impact to the downstream storm system. That's the goal. So that's the first thing. The second thing is East Gaither, I agree, people coming down the hill to Twenty Fourth, there likely will be a stop sign there. We have not looked at any of this yet. These are really just very basic drawings to understand for this hearing what is being presented.
Mr. Cooper, where would the stop sign? Which intersection would the stop sign be?
Well.
At Gaither and.
I'm sure. I'm sorry. I'm sure it would probably be at Gaither and Twenty Fourth.
Okay.
There would be a stop sign there. There would also be a stop sign on Twenty Sixth at the intersection of North Fork. Generally, that's where the stop signs go when they approach streets that are, you know, where normally they try to address that traffic impact to adjacent streets and stop signs are submitted. As far as address traffic calming, yes, the city has a traffic calming ordinance. It's generally tried to apply in existing subdivision streets, and it is really to alleviate problems that have occurred in the past, and it usually is looked at by staff. It's also looked at by the homeowners. It's a collaborative type of thing. We, I can talk to the developer, talk to the engineer about what to do with traffic, but in general, you try to stop it. You try to slow it down as much as you can. I can't say what's going to happen. I mean, any street, you just can't predict what's going to happen with some drivers, but you could try to prevent it as much as possible. As far as stormwater, again, developers were required to collect all the runoff from stormwater on the surface and contain it and slow it down as if it was predeveloped and as if the trees are still there, but it's being contained in a stormwater pond. That's kind of the goal of what happens, and that's what's required.
What happens?
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, please don't. I can't take testimony from the audience, but I'm getting there.
Yes, I'm in general. It's just that the question is, is it's you're assuming that maybe that that water won't be collected or won't continue to, won't be collected and drained to a certain pond, and that's what the goal is. That's what they put catch basins in the roads for. Will all the water be caught? I can't tell you all the water will be caught, but it will generally try to collect all the water in the streets, all the houses, and that's what was talked about before with the roof runoff, going to underground storm systems to try to collect it, to try to keep it all in the ground if possible, and collect it, pipe it directly to a storm pond. That's part of the engineering design. At this point, I can't say what, how that's going to look, because we have to look at the engineering when they submit it. So that's all I can really say about it.
Who's responsible?
Who is responsible? The developer? Yes.
That's a civil issue that can only be addressed through the courts. The code does not have a provision for who's responsible. The code doesn't address that. The only way to address that is through the court civil proceeding.
So.
That, because that's, we don't know it's. I'm sorry. I'm going to ask people to hold. Don't speak during, right now, please. Let Mr. Cooper testify. If you have questions, you can talk to him after the hearing. If he doesn't address the issues or the applicant doesn't, I will consider that in my decision. Right now, he's trying, doing his best to do that, so let's let him proceed.
So the way it works with these developments is that the developer and the future HOA is responsible for the stormwater ponds. They're responsible for everything on the private property, which is stormwater ponds. They have to deal with that stormwater. The city maintains the storm system in the public streets, ones that's dedicated to the city. But past that, developer has to. Developer and HOA are responsible for maintaining the pond, make sure those are being kept up to, you know, maintenance standards that are acceptable, and so that it's operating the way it was designed. So city streets is city's responsibility. Anything on private property, which you normalize the ponds, anything to do with that are all the developers and HOA. See, I'm not sure traffic trips. Traffic trips, you know, the trip generation manual is a general manual to estimate the number of trips. I can't say that there's going to be seven hundred and ninety-two trips, you know, going down Gaither. That's not what it's looking at. It's looking at what the average is in a development of this type, which is a single-family development. How much traffic comes off of your road, I couldn't tell you either, and I could look at the, I could look at the numbers and tell you this is what it comes out to be, but what your, what was generated on that road right now, I can't tell you. I can just tell you what the average is. And so that's really what they're looking at. It's not really trying to say, oh, all these trips are going to go down here. The engineer, the traffic engineer was trying to figure out how this would be split in these two access points, one on North Fork and the other one on East Twenty Fourth. So really, it was a split of how they estimated that. I, again, that's an average daily trip, too. What's called peak, there's what's called peak hour, which those trips are really what happens in the morning and the evening. How many trips you have coming off the road as a peak, but average daily traffic, really, that's really subjective. You can't put a number on something and say, this is how many trips we're going to have. It's just an estimation. That's all it is. So I can't really answer any more about that, other than that's just the general accepted design standards that everybody uses now. I don't know if that answers all the questions, but maybe the applicant can answer more questions about this.
Mr. Cooper, before you move on, I had a couple of questions. There was questions about if they're going to use pumps to collect the stormwater runoff from the lower elevations.
No.
I didn't think they would.
So, no. It's all going to collect by gravity and be piped in existing pipes, or it's going to be collected in underground and drained by gravity to a stormwater pond and then outfall by gravity. It'll all be gravity, and the applicant could justify this, but everything that I've seen, everything works by gravity.
Yeah. And the, I understand the staff report says the city will own the stormwater facility that the homeowners association required to maintain them.
No, that, well, that's incorrect.
Maybe, okay, that's what I.
Yeah, so that's incorrect. It's going to be owned by the developer, it'll be maintained by the contractor that builds it, and eventually be taken over by the homeowners association. Homeowners association will need to maintain these ponds. That's the way all the stormwater ponds are in these subdivisions now. So, but the street, the storm system in the streets, the catch basins, the piping is maintained by the city because it's public right away.
And the city has a required schedule for when this maintenance occurs and will follow.
Yes. We have a regimented schedule on when they maintain, when they clean catch basins or look at storm systems throughout the year.
Thank you. Anything further from city staff?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Examiner. I wanted to address the item about wildfires and evacuations. We are working as a city with the county. The county is working on a countywide climate hazard mitigation plan as part of the twenty year planning process with the comprehensive plan update, and that's part of some new climate requirements that came from the state. And so the city is currently working with the county to evaluate climate hazards, including wildfire across the city and across the entire county. Regarding to the date of the hearing, we apologize if that was, the June twenty-sixth date was posted anywhere. We did not see that, but we do apologize if that occurred. However, we did post on the public notice that was issued on June tenth that the hearing be on June twenty-fifth. And our noticing, so we have this two different noticing periods. The first notice was a notice of application as well as the SEPA determination, and that was noticed per state, or not state, city code. This is a type-three decision, which is a subdivision, and type-three decisions require a notice to the newspaper and posted on the website and also within three hundred feet radius of the property itself. So therefore, that's why some property owners here tonight may have not received that notice because they were outside of that required three hundred foot buffer. However, it was posted on the city's website and in the newspaper and other accessible means.
I'm sorry, I can't take any testimony from the public right now. I want to let him respond. If you have other questions, you can contact him after the hearing.
An additional means is we post them like at, here in the posting board here at the city hall.
Ma'am, again, I can't take testimony from the audience. It's not, you're not on the microphone. It's not coming out in the recording. It's just going to be background noise in the, in the recording.
Thank you. So we did notice per our standard noticing requirements, both comment periods, and received comments from the first round and the second round of comment periods. And then there was a note made that additional exhibits were added after the first comment period. While these comments periods are occurring, city staff is also evaluating the application itself, and so we're working with the applicant and noticing that there's maybe some issues that aren't compliant with the city code. So there was additional exhibits that were provided, additional materials that were provided of the applicant trying to meet with, showing, making those revisions to meet to the code requirements, and those exhibits have been added to this second round of comment period and for the application tonight and the public hearing packets, and those will be, those are posted online as well. So it's not the intent of the applicant or the city to hide that material or exhibits. It's just during the process, it's a preliminary design process, so there's a lot of ongoing issues we're working through, and as we're generating the staff report and analyzing it, we see that these issues coming through, and we're working with the applicant to make sure they're compliant with the city code. And then regarding just the tree removal process, there has been a note of the amount of trees removed on the site. As the city has the power to do, we requested the applicant to look at different site layouts to preserve as many trees possible on the site while also reasonably economically using their site as well. And as they showed in their narrative and with materials, they had a site that had up to a hundred lots and cutting down much more trees than they are now, and we requested them to revise the layout per the city code, which they provided this material. And also with the mitigation they're providing, it's a one-to-one ratio for any tree above ten inches D V H or greater, and they are compliant with that code. And we also have WDFW's support commending the applicant of balancing the use of, they're proposing a site, but also balancing the ecological function, and several of those trees as well are not completely being removed from the site, as noted in our staff report. Several of these will be, will remain as logs, priority logs or snags, which are used and critical for habitat function, especially around riparian buffers, as noted by WDFW. So again, we want to reiterate that applicant made substantial effort in their tree removal portion of the application. And that concludes my response. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you want to come up? I need to get you on the microphone just.
Hi, Celeste Monroe again. So what I noticed is in the hearing document that questions were proposed by seven folks, and there was a response. And we posed a lot of questions today, and thank you so much for the answers that were provided, but my, one of my questions wasn't answered. Will we receive the same courtesy for the questions that were answered?
I will try and address all of the questions that were asked in my final order.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. You're welcome. Yes.
I have a comment.
Yeah, can I get your name and title?
Yeah. Tracy Coleman, the Community Development and Public Works Director, and I just want to talk about a couple items that you have all addressed that we are very familiar with as a city. And majority of what I'm seeing outside of traffic is the, basically landslide hazard area, erosion control hazards, stormwater, so on and so forth. And I want to assure you as the municipality for the City of La Center, which was done for the development that you live in and also for this development, and we have actually requested from the applicant to update their geotechnical report because it hasn't adequately addressed the landslide hazards, the erosion hazard areas, and we ask them to also look at some of the stormwater ordinance that it hasn't addressed that we have not approved yet. So I think the comments that you have brought to us are great comments, and I want to assure you that they will be addressed with the applicant, and to assure you that we do realize that we are on a hillside, and they aren't all addressed here. And so those are something that hasn't gone forward as far as approval yet. It's a review process that we're looking at. It's a process, so we've asked for updated documentation from the developer before we move forward on that. So I want to let you know that we will review that, and we will make sure that we take all your comments into consideration and make sure that we do our absolute best to make sure that you don't have drainage issues coming down the hill. This is an ongoing process, and this is a step that we're listening to your comment, and so we're going to have some answers for you after we get the geotechnical reports back from them, and maybe have some answers that will satisfy your guys' comments and your concerns so in the future. So it's good to have these meetings, and that's what these are for, and then it gives us a chance to go back and work with the developer to make sure that we address those. So I just want to make sure you guys know about that.
Ms. Coleman, those additional reports and reviews will be during final engineering, correct?
That's correct.
After I issue my decision on this.
That's correct.
If I approve it.
Yes, sir.
Is that it from the city, then? Okay. Mr. Wolf?
Mason Wolf, representing the applicant again. Do you need my address again?
No.
There was a lot of comments, a lot of concerns, understandably. There's always a lot of concerns when there's a large new development, especially when it sounds like there's been some issues over time. I want to start with, mostly I'm going to try to address some direct questions. I'm not going to go point by point and try to cover everything. There was a question about the potable water, where we're getting it. Clark Public Utilities provides the water, all the public water for the City of La Center. They will be upgrading pumps to the reservoir that's just northwest, just across the street from the site, and we will be connecting to that reservoir. There was a question about who's responsible. This is very generic, but I think it warrants a response because it seemed like a really important question. Who's responsible if things go bad? Mr. Examiner, you mentioned that that's a case for the civil courts if things go bad, but generically, the process is, a project gets designed, it then gets constructed, and then it has to be maintained. And often down the road, when its lifespan has ended, it has to be rebuilt. And so the responsibilities kind of follow that same suit typically. If it's designed poorly, if it's accepted poorly, if it's constructed poorly, or if it's poorly maintained, there are responsibilities that can be leaned on there, but that is a case for the civil courts. Taffet, there was a question about which page on the traffic distribution. It was page ten of the traffic report with the accompanying figure three attached to that page ten. Again, I understand there's a lot of concerns. This is, I want to remind everybody, this is a preliminary plat approval. It's not a final plat approval. It still has to go through really the rigorous part of the approval, which is the civil engineering plans, the construction plans, which is where stormwater, we have to meet all the codes, has been mentioned previously, same with streets, the construction of the streets, where we connect. If we beat up the roads during construction, that is something that gets addressed through the code as well. And so we have a team of highly experienced, qualified civil engineers, traffic engineers, geotechnical, the list goes on, and I personally choose to work with ones that do. And I personally choose to work with ones that do a very good job to try to protect bad things from happening, is the concern. Those same designs are going to then get scrutinized by the city and their consultants, and to come to a final plan that is to alleviate to the best extent practical possible the bad things that you're concerned about. And I understand the concerns. But bad things can happen. There might be springs that we're not aware of, as Tony mentioned, and as we're constructing them, if they appear, we got to address them. It sounds like there's some existing water issues already going on, and we haven't even started yet. We don't know where they're coming from or why. The property owners were good stewards of the property. They could have forced, they could have logged this property before it got into the city, and nobody would have had a say in it. They wanted to be good stewards, they kept it as long as possible, but now it's time for them to move on. They're in the development, they're in the city limits, where they're allowed by code to do what the code says they can do. I, like hearing examiner and like staff, have a responsibility, my client, to produce a product that meets the code. I believe we went above and beyond the code with parks, trails, with, working with fish and wildlife to do a little bit more than what would normally be probably required for the two oaks that we are removing and the trees that we're removing. And I have to say, the tree thing, while I understand it, the trees, the city's tree code is the most burdensome of any jurisdiction in the entire county. And it took me an extra nine months to deal with that code, through surveys and everything. It was, it's the biggest thing I've taken on as far as trees and survey, tree surveys. Again, if I understood what you said, Mr. Examiner, you're going to leave the record open for a week? So those who thought maybe it was a little short notice to be here tonight, you're going to have a week to respond to this and submit. I'll let Mr. Examiner give more details about that, but you're going to have another week. And does that mean we get to respond to that as well?
Yeah. Do you want the opportunity to submit new evidence, or just for an argument?
Just if we need to respond to anything.
Okay. Because if you want to submit new evidence, I'd have to hold it open for everybody to respond to the new evidence. So there's two options. I can hold it open for two weeks, one week for the public, one week for the applicant's final argument without any new evidence.
If you, if you keep it open for the second week, do we have the ability to close it immediately?
Yeah.
As soon as, okay.
Yeah, you submit your final argument at any point.
That would be the preference.
Okay.
A little bit back to the geology of the report and the conditions. We will have that submitted with engineering. The Geotech is working on that now, and I mean, it's just a matter of showing those buffers like you've requested and addressing those issues, and that'll be in a document during engineering. Again, or, sorry, the applicant has met the burden of evidence that the proposed plan either does meet or can meet through conditions, all relevant codes in place at time of investing. I don't remember the exact date of investing. I believe it was when we were fully complete. Is that correct? Which was, I honestly don't remember that date, but it was a few months ago. But those are the codes that were in place and that we all have to abide by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Is that it from the applicant, then? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the hearing. I'm going to give you my, grab my calendar and tell you, I'm going to hold the record open for a week, or two weeks, rather. One week for anyone, the public, to submit additional written testimony and evidence. And one week for the applicant alone to submit a final written argument. Today's the 25th Tuesday, no, Sunday, Monday, yeah, Tuesday, the 25th, okay. Hold it open until July 2nd for anybody to submit new testimony and evidence from the public. I will note that if anybody missed, everybody hears, okay, but if anybody was trying to get online, given the error in the hearing link, they can review the hearing recording on the city's website, which will be posted tomorrow, and comment based on that. So anything anybody wants to submit during the open record period has to be physically received by the city by 5:00, by 5:00 PM on the 2nd of July. You can email it, you can hand-deliver it, whatever, but as long as you give it time to get here to the city. Who, should they send it to? Okay. And your contact information in the notice?
It should be in the notice.
Okay.
Online.
Okay. So you can submit it to Ms. Merrill?
The contact information is not in the notice.
Can you give us your email? Just so people have it?
Is a Merrill at.
Thanks.
A M E R R I L L at, I'm sorry, I'm new, F C E I dot thecenter.wa.us.
And where is it on the city's website?
It's under Community Development on the website as well.
Okay. So anything you want to.
And my phone number, too.
Okay. Anything you want to submit, you can direct it to Ms. Merrill. She'll send it on to me when the record closes. You had a question, sir?
What happens if two weeks is not enough time to submit?
No, it's one week for the public.
Okay, one week for the public. What happens if someone along the way wanted to take a, an engineering study, a separate one, to check the book of works that were provided by the builder?
The state law has deadline, I can't hold it open for significantly longer for that purpose.
See, that's, what if that were to be the case, where it was needed, you needed to have an engineer, someone.
I understand.
Well, I don't know what you're doing.
But I'm trying to respond. The city sends out notice and gives people the opportunity, if you want to hire an engineer, you have to do that beforehand. State law has limit, has time limits that the city has to meet. So I can't hold it open for longer. If you want to do that, I can't hold it open for that purpose. So I'll hold it open until July 2nd for the public, until July 9th for the applicant alone to submit a final written argument. If the applicant wants to submit it sooner, I'll close the record upon receipt. Yes, ma'am?
Is there a procedural question about people who've got the, the, when we're speaking? How do they know?
The city posted it on their website. If they're unable to get on, they're likely to contact the city and say, I couldn't get on, what happened?
And they'll be informed?
Yes.
Because it's like they don't know what they've done.
Yes. But I'm assuming anybody who did try and was unable to is going to contact the city. So that's what I'm going to do. I will try and get my decision out within two weeks after the close of the record, so, can't read my phone without my glasses. July 23rd, I will send my decision to the city if you've testified orally, or you do so in, have or do so during the open record in writing, or you signed the list, which was in the back of the room, I don't know if it's still there or not, and legibly print your name and email address. You'll be sure and receive a copy of my decision when it's issued. But that concludes our hearing. Thank you all. Have a good evening.